Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ken Smith, the Mayor of the City of Vader. I extend a very perjil welcome to each of you in attendance tonight in behalf of the City Council. And particularly, I extend an appreciation to the members of the Council who are all here. I'll officially declare this meeting to order at 6:02 PM. Mr. Flynn, being the Mayor pro tem, would you kind of keep rough notes for us?
Oh, boy.
See, at the starting time?
Okay, I wrote that down.
Oh, excellent.
Also, good start.
Okay. Because having called this meeting to order, our first order of business is to conduct the roll call. And Jill Nielsen, our City Clerk, has been attending in behalf of the City Council and the Mayor, a three-day conference in Wenatchee. And her plans were to be back here, but she's run into some traffic challenges and hopes to be here in the next 20 to 25 minutes. In the meantime, we will officially record this meeting, as is customary in the City of Vader, and we'll engage in our completion of our agenda in her absence until she comes. So our first order of business would be the roll call. As Mayor and the individual who's responsible to moderate the City Council meetings, I'll engage in that roll call. So if you're present, please indicate audibly enough to be recorded on our tape recorder. Mark Penison?
Present.
Justin Olson?
Present.
Present.
Andy Wilton? Okay. Temporary mental lapse, if you can believe that. Joe Schei?
Present.
Kevin Flynn?
Present.
And I, Ken Smith, am also present, so we have a quorum. Let's now proceed, as is customary in our City Council meetings, with an invitation. And I would like to invite Mr. Penison, if you wouldn't mind, to lead us, and invite those present to join with us.
Our Father, Himmel, Lord, we thank you for the many blessings of life. We thank you for this privilege, and we have tonight to assemble here with the fine citizens of Vader and to conduct this business as we used to always ask that you give us wisdom. It might be as good, as best, or as right. That might glorify everything we say and do. We ask these things in Jesus' name.
Amen. Mr. Penison, I now invite all to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Wilson, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, I had a picture taken for November 7th in Oregon, Toledo.
Oh, yes.
There has to be three of us.
Did they take you last? Did they take your picture last to save the camera, so they got everybody off?
My picture.
Excellent. Well, good. You're famous. Well, let's proceed with our Mayor's Report. At the top of the list is the Fire Department parking area. I was pleased to discern that, as a reminder, we've been asked by the Police or Fire Department to not park in the gravel parking area on the nights of our City Council meetings because the Fire Department is using that area for private parking. And I noted that nobody had to actually park there tonight, so I guess the word is getting out. It's good. I wanted to inform the Council that you're probably already aware of the fact that we're beginning Phase Two of the private side sewer project, that there have been 16 residents identified who qualified for that, and so we're anxious to set that in motion. And you probably noticed them moving around about town, getting ready for that startup, and that that will complete the expenditure of the grant fundings that we've received for that project. And I wanted to note that the public hearings before the Planning Committee or the Council regarding the property tax levy rates for 2016 will be held on November 12th at our Council meeting, for your information. And as a follow-up to that, also, you'll have a public hearing. We invite the public to be present for that, if you're so inclined, before the Vader City Planning Committee that will relate to the marijuana regulations that the Council has been studying and dealing with for the past several months. So that's all I have as far as the Mayor's Report is concerned. So without further ado, let's proceed with the approval of our official agenda for this evening. I personally have no changes to it, and so would await Council action.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda for the meeting of October 22nd, 2015.
You've heard the motions submitted by Mr. Olson to approve the agenda, as it is currently written. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Flynn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Now, the approval of our minutes from our October 8th City Council meeting.
Comment? Where the letter was read regarding me being a liar by Mr. Parsons, I'd like to make sure that that letter is put in here word for word. Carry it.
That seems, that's doable. It's perfectly acceptable. But that doesn't have anything to do with the approval of the agenda, but duly noted. So the minutes' approval, await Council action?
I'll put a motion that we approve the minutes for October 8th, 2015 City Council meeting.
Okay. Mr. Flynn has submitted a motion that we approve those minutes. Do we have a second? Secuted by Mr. Penison. We have an opportunity for additional input.
With the difference, Mr. Parsons better be put in there personally, one by one, or...
Okay. Are you willing to modify your motion to ensure the inclusion of that email?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
I'll modify the motion, the motion that we adjust the minutes to have the letter from Mike Parsons included word for word in the agenda and kept in the records for October 8th, 2015 City Council meeting. Is that acceptable?
Yeah. Is that acceptable? Okay. And you've heard the motion modified by Mr. Flynn to ensure that the email read to the public by our City Clerk at our last Council meeting be inserted verbatim in the minutes. Okay, very good. Now, do we have a second? Mr. Penison, please, the second. Any additional comments? Okay. I would, probably I feel it appropriate, because I have gotten a flyer's information from Mr. Wilson expressing some legal concerns about the contents of that email. And I think it calls into question the amount of money that is being, you're indicating would cost for the replacement of the signs, in the amount of $30,000. I think it's probably appropriate that I make, as a matter of public record, that I have a subsequent document from the same individual that you cite, in which he gives a more official estimate of those costs, to be from between $8,500 and $15,000. I think it's probably appropriate that we ensure that that document be placed in minutes as well for tonight's meeting. So I thought it would be appropriate to add that.
Is that from the same person?
Yeah, Mr. David Berkey, from the Washington State Department of Transportation. His is dated August 12th, 2015. And so I think it's appropriate that we have that inserted at tonight's meeting. So with that having been said, let's proceed with our voucher approval and await Council action.
Did we vote on that?
We didn't vote on it.
Oh, okay, we do have to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, opposed and carries. Excellent. Now, let's proceed with the voucher approvals. You would wait Council action.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for the 1st of October 2015 in the amount of $11,597.93 for a total, and the end of October 2015 in the amount of $18,975.07 for an October 2015 total of $30,573.
Excellent. Okay, you've heard the motions submitted by Mr. Schei to approve those voucher expenditures in the amounts specified. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Secuted by Mr. Olson. Any additional commentary? Are you done? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, excellent. Well, it's now time for our public comment. Yeah, Mr. Flynn, would you do the honors for us?
There are three.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Excellent. Well, we have three individuals. I would invite those three individuals, one at a time, to step to the podium, announce your names, and then bear in mind that this is our official egg timer. We have three minutes for your commentary to the public, but we're grateful to you for your being here. Our first presenter would be Mr. Don Chaffrin.
Thank you. My question is on the sewer system. I'd like to know what the number-one option is. Is it going down in Chapman Lane, or is it going through Gary Basher's property? Can I get an answer on that?
Would someone care to respond to that?
I thought we didn't have a, we don't have a place picked yet.
No, we have options. We have options, but the Council is not engaged in the negotiations to the point where they selected a final option.
Okay. Can you, which, which option, I understand that the one option is 8,500 square, or 8,500 feet from your treatment plant to the river. Is that a fact, or is that option also?
Seems like a mile and a half was about right.
Sounds about right. That's the straight route that you're referring to?
Right. And that would be, my understanding, that that would be going down in Chapman Lane? Right?
Yes, would direct straight across West Side Highway.
Has there been any plans from the City of Vader or any state entity to put a sewer treatment plant at the end of Enchantment Lane?
It's news to me.
Not that I know about.
Okay. Who's paying for it? Because we're not, right?
Well, I, yeah, that's kind of what I know. That's what I've heard, so I'm questioning all of this. So if your system is going to go through Enchantment Lane, will the people out there be required to hook up to the system?
I don't think that's...
That's not going to be a raw sewage line. That's just a discharge line.
Just the discharge.
It's just a discharge.
Okay.
Because in order to, you'd have to run two lines, and there's no, no even thought at all about running two lines.
There's been no, no speaking of that at all.
All they're talking about is a discharge line. That's after the water's already been treated, cleaned, and then it would be discharged. And they don't want it in the Yewaqua, because the water flow's not great enough, but the river's, the water flow's greater, so they're telling us that's where it has to go. But that's all treated water. It's not raw sewage.
Okay. Well, when, and we're just new...
I understand.
To the area. And when I did drive around, that area through Enchantment Lane is pretty shallow at this time of year. It doesn't look like it would accommodate the flow, to me.
Oh, the river?
Yes.
This is a very unusual river. If you take a look at the, if you take a look at the Yewaqua Creek...
I'd have to note, for the Council's information, that we've reached a three-minute limit.
Okay. I'd like to finish the answer, though, but the Yewaqua Creek, the flow is actually a lot less.
Right.
And that's why they're choosing the river. I understand what you're saying.
Yes. Thank you.
And in the event that there might be those who think that we're trying to circumvent questions on it, this information is readily available. You can simply come to City Hall and make an inquiry. I'd be more than happy to meet anybody to share the factual information about the status of that project. These three-minute public comment periods at the City Council meeting aren't intended to exhaust the details of every subject. This is a Vader City Council meeting. The public are welcome to come, but it's not designed to be interrogation or cross-examination during this process. I hope that is clear.
If I'm the Mayor.
Yes.
Well, I didn't mean to interrogate. I just have these questions, because we're new, and that's all.
Of course. I know I met with you personally, and we went through all of this. So I was, I'm glad you're here, and I'm glad that you're getting a sense that the Council members are confirming what I told you. So, and I'd be more than happy to bring all of the documents we've got about where we're at in this project, and to talk to both of you. It's what we do. We're as transparent, an elected administration, as I think you will find.
Just, just, I just wanted to say that, right now, the, there's an engineering firm that is collecting the pros and cons of all the different options for different routings. And once they're done, they will present that information to the Council at that time with all the different options, monies that it will take and all that. And that has not come back to us yet.
Okay.
So that's where we are. We're just kind of waiting for an engineering firm to give us all that information.
Okay.
So there is one out there working on it, though.
Yeah. Okay. With that, thank you very much for being here, making your, your questions known. Next would be Hallie Sword.
Hi, Hallie Sword, April 11th, in Vegas, Vader. I became very curious, because I've heard a lot of people saying that we would lose our post office, and we wouldn't get our mail, and our social security would stop, and I don't know what all. And, you know, I don't know. I hate paperwork with a passion. I don't want to redo everything. So I did a little test on the mail. I sent out some letters. They were sent out of Oregon, Washington, California, and Utah. I deliberately put the wrong city and wrong state, but the correct zip code. That's important. My daughter, I used her return address, because I wanted the letters to have a place to come back, if they were not delivered back to my little yellow mailbox. And it is a correct return address. Nothing came to her, all came to me, with the exception of one, which I'll get to at the end here. The interesting one, and I have copies for you to look at. I went ahead and got them in color, so you could see them clearer, if you're still looking at them, I don't know if you're not. And I have the originals. Okay. In the interest of not using up my three minutes on this, the only one that did not return was the one that I addressed to Washington, DC. And I'm probably being investigated by the Security Homeland Division, and so I may need help with verification that I am not a dangerous coop. Dangerous, no. Coop, maybe a little bit, but very well, and the merit of vouch for me. The last thing I have to say is, if you're cruising down I-5, and you're, you know, you see a sign that says Little Falls, and you're hungry, you want to bite to eat, or maybe you want to check out some little stores, you kind of tend to go that way if it says Vader. Not so much. And I appreciate that. I have friends on both sides. You know, it's not a life-and-death issue for me, but Vader has a clean, happy, peppy sound? No, not so much, I'm sorry. But Little Falls does. Thank you.
Okay, excuse me.
It's your home, and I appreciate that.
Yes, very good. Appreciate that. Duly noted, and thank you for your presentation. I'd invite the members of the public to at least grant the courtesy of the presenters by refraining from your heckling. Okay, thank you.
I'm good. I'm totally good.
Thank you very much. Last, we have an individual, Mr. Greg Booth, who's with us.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the Council. My name is Greg Booth. I reside a couple miles west of town in the Cougar Flat Valley. I'm actually the fifth generation that has lived here, of the Booth family. Wanted to take an opportunity, actually, to thank the City Council for placing the ballot measure up for the voters here in this community, and to change the name back to Little Falls. Unfortunately, those of us who live outside of the city limits will not be able to vote on this measure, although it affects us just as much as those of you in town. And this measure, if passed, would actually undo an injustice imposed on this committee, on this community over 100 years ago, that and the surrounding rural areas, both by the State of Washington and the Northern Pacific Railroad. While the railroad wasn't satisfying and just taking away our name, no, they had to, I remember as a boy witnessing the removal of train station, and the water tower sightings, and basically anything else associated with the railroad that would have any meaningful connection with this community, and so that any rational reason for removing or having a conflict with Little Falls, Minnesota, was effectively removed a long time ago. Well, for those of us with roots in this community that go back about 150 years, we hope the voters take the step to restore the heritage of the community and prove changing the name back to Little Falls, which is always the name that my family used to describe our home. So if this happens, I'd be most glad to donate my assistance in whatever tasks and costs are necessary to implement this change. And again, my thanks to the City Council for putting this on the ballot. And my only regrets is I will not be able to vote on it, as I am a resident of the county, not the city. Thanks.
Well, thank you, Mr. Booth. That was unexpected, so appreciate that. Well, that concludes the public comment portion of our Council meeting. It will now be our opportunity to begin the city business, and item one on that city business is an executive session. And I will declare, as a matter of notice, to the members in this meeting that this executive session should last 15 minutes or less. If it extends beyond that, we'll come out and inform you. But to make a note of public record, this executive session is being called to discuss with our legal counsel, and we'll be on a teleconference call with her, Jennifer Robertson, representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions, or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation, a potential litigation to which the agency, the governing body, or member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency, as set forth in RCW 42.30.110.1-I. So with that, I would invite the Council members to come with me, and we'll convene our executive session inside of my office space. And we'll declare this meeting on hold beginning at 7:26 PM. I mean, I'm sorry, 6:26 PM. We will officially reconvene this city regularly-scheduled City Council meeting at 6:46 PM. And we welcome our City Clerk, Jill Nielsen, who's arrived, safe and sound. Appreciate that.
If everybody wanted to talk about the current options.
Okay, wonderful. All right. We've completed the executive session portion of our agenda. No decisions were made in that executive session by members of the Council. And our City Attorney, Jennifer Robertson, was present via telephone conference in that session. Now, let's proceed now with item number two on our business agenda, and that's of Council consideration of Ordinance 2015-10 on the street vacation procedures. Hopefully, you've had a chance to read the document that's been prepared for you relating to that.
You waiting for a motion?
Yeah. Or any comment?
I read through it, and it's pretty, pretty clear. It's a lot more complete than it was when I purchased my property, but it's, it's there. So I'll put the motion forward.
Okay.
Okay, you've got a lot of reading to do. I move to adopt Ordinance 2015-10 relating to the procedures for right-of-way vacations, updating these procedures consisting with Chapter 39.79 RCW, repealing Ordinance Number 231, and adopting new regulations which will comprise a new Chapter 12.04 in the Vader Municipal Code when officially codified. An ordinance of the City of Vader, Washington, relating to procedures for right-of-way vacations, updating these procedures consistent with Chapter 35.79 RCW, repealing Ordinance Number 231, and adopting new regulations which shall comprise a new Chapter 12.04 in the Vader Municipal Code when officially codified. That should be complete.
Okay, all right. Now, you've heard the motion submitted to the Council to approve the Ordinance 2015-10 as read. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Secuted by Mr. Olson. Have any additional Council commentary? If not, let's put the matter to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. Next item. I just realized that we placed on the agenda a recommendation for a planning committee assignment, and I do have a recommendation for the Council to consider. This is actually, those are my originals. If that, that I will, go ahead and pass those down. If you'll recall, I mentioned in our previous Council meeting that we have one remaining vacancy on our planning committee. And I'm pleased to report that I've identified an individual, I've spoken with him on a number of occasions at length, and his name is John Farman, and he's presently with us in this meeting tonight. We welcome you, John. Appreciate you being here. He's a relatively new resident of Vader, but I can report, after meeting with him on a number of occasions, that he understands the complexities of city planning. He is concerned about the City of Vader, and he's had a previous community leadership experience. And would you say that's an accurate description?
Yes.
Mr. Farman? Okay. And I can attest to the fact that he's intelligent, he's reasonable, and works well with people. He's, I believe he possesses the attributes of character and personal integrity that I think will suit him well for service on our planning committee. So for those reasons, I'm pleased to present him to you for your confirmatory vote to serve on the planning committee. And would, in way... And would, and wait, await council action.
A motion on that?
Yeah.
I'll put a motion forward that we approve John Farman for position on the planning committee.
Okay, you've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Flynn to approve Mr. Farman's service on the planning committee. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peniston. Then any additional commentary? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Excellent. Well, congratulations, Mr. Farman.
Well, I hope so.
This is always the best part when you get started.
Yeah, that's right. It's going downhill from now.
Well, there will be an official swearing-in ceremony, if you don't mind, and we'd like to carry that out at perhaps our next planning committee meeting, which is scheduled for November 16th. No, November 12th, if I'm not mistaken. Gotcha. Yes, we actually mentioned that. It's November 16th, 6:30 PM. So thank you. With that, I can tell you that we also, I was hoping to invite your confirmatory vote for a new member of the city park board, but have discerned that it was not on the official agenda for tonight, so we'll take care of that item of business at our next city council meeting. Okay, and with that, we'll proceed to our last item, which is update of a meter-read memorandum of understanding with Lewis County. And I'm pleased to report that prior to this meeting, I received an official document, it's been, the verbiage of which has been approved by Lewis County Public Works Director and the Lewis County Attorney, Glenn Carter. And this agreement was pounded out with the assistance of Joe Reberger, our legal representative who's been working with us in our drinking water receivership, management, administrative cooperation. And I suppose that we could give copies of this to the council for their consideration, but.
At the next council meeting.
You don't think it'll create a problem if the council doesn't review it tonight?
Oh, no, they don't need to review it tonight.
Excellent, okay, wonderful. I'm pleased that it's taken some time, but what this particular amended agreement will allow is that we'll receive the meter readings from the public works director for our water meters, for our waste treatment bills, to arrive on the 5th of every bimonthly billing cycle. So it's a little thing, but it represents a significant step forward in our relationship with Lewis County. All right, then, any questions about that? No? Okay, very good. That's our update on that situation. I don't have any additional items of note on the agenda, so unless there's something said to the contrary by the council, I'll declare this meeting adjourned at 6:55 PM.